Thank you, Margot. Welcome, everybody, to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of March 8th, 2022. We've called this meeting to order at, what, 6:31? And the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on February 22nd, 2022.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting, February 22nd, 2022.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is Audience of Citizens. We have a good crowd here. Fred, go ahead.
I've had some discussion in the past about traffic safety in the town. And, you know, I heard the comments about the centerline rumble strips being used to save one life kind of stuff.
Okay.
Well, one thing that would save one life or many more is if we start improving on the traffic safety in this town. This is a picture taken from the Friday after Thanksgiving, just down the street from me, where a car went up over this bank and flipped over multiple times. There was no recognizable part of what brand the car was.
Where was it?
It had, just right down the street from me, just across from Steve Davis.
True.
He went up over this bank from the previous driveway.
Yep.
So I don't know how fast he was going.
Too fast.
Constable Isner was on scene, I think it was probably one of his first days.
Oh, that was a long time ago.
Okay, that was November 27th.
Okay.
Now, this is Sunday, a week ago. Now, this is the remains of my mailbox post, and you can see where the tire tracks led off up by my neighbor's mailbox. This is a telephoto shot, so it kind of cramps it up. There's another shot of the tire tracks, and you can see how far off the road he was.
Yep.
Now, this is a road that our kids ride to Flatwood Park on, they ride to the schools on, they have walkers and joggers on this road. Monday morning, I'm in my driveway, and there was a bicyclist going by, and a tractor-trailer crossed over the center line to go around him. Oncoming traffic had stopped.
Mm-hmm.
We've got to do something about traffic safety on that road, and that's in your hands and in your ability to control.
Yeah.
We need to do something. You know, I mean, this is getting crazy. My own daughter-in-law, a few years ago, was broad-sighted, pulling out of my driveway with her kids watching. And I've gotten a lot of head-knocking from every selectman all along, from Joe Mazzeski on.
Yep.
But nothing changes out there. In fact, it's getting worse.
Well, I appreciate this, I appreciate your concern about that. I think we all do. If you were driving around town today, you saw police all over the place. We had enforcement, state traffic. It wasn't the DOT, but the state police had people in town, they were pulling people over.
I saw several vehicles down by, one thing that I would suggest...
So we are stepping it up, Fred.
One thing I would suggest is that everybody slows down when they see a marked police car.
Yep.
Happens in Old Saverick all the time, and I don't understand why our cars look like Joe Blow's SUV, with the exception of the one cruiser.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that that would be a good step in getting some visibility out there, too, to get people to slow down.
Okay.
We need better enforcement out there. This is a bad thing, and somebody's going to get hurt.
Yep.
I mean, this bicyclist that was going by, other than Monday or Tuesday morning, the tractor-trailer was, A, too close to him, and B, he was over the center line where oncoming traffic literally came to screeching off.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and even Constable Ward said this would be a good place to sit right here, when he was looking at...
Yep.
This, my mailbox was a vandal-proof mailbox. It was not one of the tin cans.
Yeah, yeah.
It ripped out the vehicle's inner fender.
Yep.
So this guy was flying. I thought there was an explosion outside my house. I don't know what it was.
Yeah, but...
But we, I'm telling you, we need better enforcement out there.
Well, we're putting those efforts in. I appreciate your concern. Appreciate everybody's concern.
Hi, I have a question in follow-up. I read the minutes from the last meeting, and I, which I couldn't attend. I'm curious as to the next steps on reviewing the RiverCog Plan for affordable housing here in Deep River. Last I'd engaged, I'd heard there was going to be a committee. First, it was going to be under, I think, planning and zoning. Then I heard it was going to be put together with various departments and some citizen input. And I remember you all volunteering to be on that committee.
Right.
But when I read the minutes, it said there's no further action. And so I was confused. The minutes, I mean, it could have been a summary of the minutes.
I think it was probably no action required, none taken. So we didn't have any votes on that particular item on that particular night.
Will there be a committee against that question?
Yes, there will, yes. So we're going to have meetings for the next three months, and we will get back to you as that gets together.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Jane, go ahead.
Hi. Jane Samuel. I'm not home. Jane Samuel, 24 R. Street. We've received quite a bit of funding for the COVID relief, and I gather there is supposed to be a committee. And I've heard nothing about this committee, and I think it better get formed pretty quick, because I gather more money is coming in. And this is something that I think should be on the website, so that people that are interested in being on the Affordable Housing Committee, this COVID committee. I think each town has to form a committee.
Yeah. The only requirement is that it has to go through the same process as all other funding, which is through the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and then the town meeting. But, you know, we are talking about it, and we're going to get that going. We have a lot of ideas that have already been funneled into the first selectman's office. We've got a good list together, and we're going to start some conversations about it as soon as soon as we can.
I think it should be by a committee, and I think that other towns will form committees, and I think Deep River should form a committee, and not just be presented with, here's this and this. And I think the town wants to be involved in something like that.
Of course.
And I think that a committee should be formed, and I think a good place would be on the website.
Thanks. Anything else? Okay, now, I want to, before we go out of Audience of Citizens, we have a couple of items on the Board of Selectmen's meeting. I think one of those items in particular is why most of us are here tonight. I want to get the public comment for the Veragey lease contract, if there is any. I'd like to get that done now, before the Board of Selectmen begins to debate this and go over it. I don't want to have public comment during that period. So if anyone is here to speak to that, please take this time to do so. Jane?
Is there a contract we need to look at?
Yep.
When?
You could have looked at it anytime you wanted to. You can look at it now, we can go downstairs and get it for you.
Yes.
But it's unlikely you're going to be able to read it in the amount of time that you need to understand it. It's unlikely you're going to understand it. I had to send it to my council, and we had quite a bit of conversation about it. But if you need it, we will take time out from this meeting, go down and get it for you, so that you can have.
I think that all of us should have, and I think frankly that we should have time to look it over.
Jane, that's not really how things work. We are elected here to do that, to review the contracts. We all, you've been to the meetings, we've been talking about this since July. We've been working on it since July, and we've gone through all of the process that is required to go through. We went, we had the conversation, we enlisted Titan Energy from CCM, or through CCM, to manage this and to get us through the initial process and to get us to this stage. They issued an RFP. We reviewed the proposals that came in. We made our choice as to which company to go with. They offered us a contract. We reviewed that contract, we've had town council review that contract, we've been negotiating with that contract for about a month now. That contract has been, we've been talking about it at the selectmen's meetings, if anyone needed or wanted to read it, it was available for them to do so. We're not, actually, we can't delay this to give you time to read it. This has to be in front of the state by the 14th. That's why this meeting is here tonight and not later on. I appreciate your concern that you want to read it, and you're welcome to. But we're going to act on it tonight, whether it's yea or nay, and we're going to go to town meeting, and we're going to act on it, whether it's yea or nay.
My concern is that the Board of Selectmen is like the executive. The town is like the legislature.
Correct.
And you're expecting the legislature to vote on a bill they have never seen, i.e. the contract.
No. I'm actually asking the legislature to vote on whether or not the Board of Selectmen, me in particular, the first selectman, can act on the contract that has been reviewed by town council and by the Board of Selectmen. Yeah, please.
Jane, if I jump in for a second. I was very instrumental in looking at this contract from day one, when it came to us. I was very instrumental, and I'm not looking for a pat on the back, I'm just telling you my input on it. I sent the gentleman over there from Titan an email, I had 20 questions at the town meeting, I mean, at the selectmen's meeting. My answers were answered, to my sufficient that I was happy with them. It came back. We approved, moved it forward to use Veragey, and then he started negotiating the contract. And once the contract started to be negotiated, I still had some questions. And my most important questions were, how much money are we going to get? Who's responsible for the property? Who's going to maintain the property? And is our property going to be put back to the way it was when you started? Those are the most important things for myself. With all due respect to anybody in the audience here, I'm not a lawyer, I deal with contracts every day, and some of the wording in the contract, I was over my head. So unless you deal with that type of stuff every day, it's very hard. But I'm all for letting the citizens read the contract and go through with it, because that's your duty, you have the right to read it. But again, I feel that I've done my diligence, and I believe my partners here have done their diligence, to get the best deal that we possibly can. And again, I will say it publicly, I'm not that smart to ask all those questions that I asked Veragey. I had someone helping me out that deals with this on a day-to-day basis, that was an ex-employee of EverSource, that built the first solar farm in Springfield, Mass. on a dump. So again, I'm not going to take credit for it, because I'm not that smart. But I will take credit that I found out the answers that I needed, the best for the town in Deep River, who I represent.
Well, I really thank you, because I understand that you know about contracts. And so frankly, if I vote for this, I'm voting for it on the basis of your knowledge and the fact that you worked on it, and that you had that kind of background.
Thank you.
I think that you've done a good job with this, protecting the town and looking out for the town's best interest, and I thank you for that.
One of the big things that I was very hung up on, and it's no disrespect to anybody, but you can write numbers on a piece of paper all day long, for 20 years, you can say it's going to generate A, B, C, all these numbers. That didn't mean nothing to me. That's why I pushed Angus and Titan to get a secured contract that's going to pay us $43,001 per year for the next 20 years, and we're guaranteed $860,000. We are guaranteed it. With the other way, you can put whatever numbers you want, and I didn't believe that that was true. Because now, we have control. We have the contract with the guaranteed numbers. And did we give up some money? Maybe, we'll never know. But we know that we're guaranteed $860,000.
And your questions were answered about putting the land back.
Yes.
And is there any kind of guarantee for that?
That's what's in the contract.
And you've got that in there?
Yes. Again, Jane, I'm a stickler, and I think Angus will contest that I was up to... My friends are paying the ass, but it's only due right for our citizens. Okay? This isn't Angus, Dwayne, or Jim. This is all the people that we represent. And maybe, you know, it could have been posted on the website, I don't know, but this just came off to fruition within the past week and a half, two weeks. So again, by the time I got to read through it and send it off to my people, they were good with it. So I've done the best I can.
I do think that, and I'm fairly new to this process, that more communication would help the citizens in general. I will say that was brought to my attention, I saw the letter that was sent to the Democratic Town Committee that malign the newly-elected chair of the Republican Town Committee, who has not yet been in office for 24 hours. And the DTC was asked to come and support this, because we were going to rush to shut this down, and, quote, and it says, "A group of people could have not paid attention, I simply want to stop progress." And I just would like to say, in this public forum...
Excuse me.
That, I was at the meeting last night, and that was not what was discussed. It was to learn more information, to sincerely understand the contract. And I would hope going forward that we could work in a spirit of collegiality. We all live here, we all pay taxes here, we all love this town. And I actually think the gentleman who was malign deserves an apology, but I just wanted that on the record. And thank you for your explanation tonight. It was very helpful.
Thank you. And I, again, I apologize that maybe there wasn't enough knowledge out there, but we've been working on this since July.
I'm the chairman of the DTC.
Hold on, Charles. Hold on, Charles.
You can address that for me.
Hold on, hold on.
She will.
We've been working on this since July, and things take time. When Titan first came in here, I wasn't 100% sure. And as we went every two weeks, every two weeks, and then we started off with four contracts, we whittled down to two contractors, we got pushed up against the due date now, and that's where we're at. Is it anyone's fault? Probably not, but things take time. But there probably should have been, maybe there could have been a little bit more communication, but we've talked about it a lot in the meetings.
It's been on the agenda since...
Well, I was going to say that, is that, you know, at selectmen's meetings, we very rarely have attendees. We have, we have small meetings with people that have, you know, something that they want to talk about, but there aren't a lot of people. This was not a secret. You know, anybody could have been at any one of our selectmen's meetings and listened to the presentation by the people that we, you know, assigned or wanted to do this for us, give us expertise. And I want to thank, again, Dwayne for his expertise, because he's got far more than I do, and a lot of expertise in his avenue of whatnot. But I've always said that we don't have enough public attendance at meetings, and it always seems like the night that we're going to do something is when, you know, oh, I didn't know, I didn't know. Well, there's a lot of ability, a lot of availability of that information when you attend the meetings. So I'll just put that two cents in.
I think, Fred, you had your hand up.
Now, I assume this is your term at Town Garage?
Yes.
Okay. When you mentioned maintenance of the property, does that mean that, because right now, that's a nice expansive grass, and quite frankly, in my opinion, there's nothing beautiful about a solar field, but if it's overgrown and weed overgrown, it's going to look even worse. At a, pretty much, it's almost a gateway to the town going right through that area if anyone entering Deep River. Is that included in the process of the maintenance of keeping that presentable-looking as possible?
It's in the contract.
Because you certainly can't weed-whack easily around supports for that kind of equipment.
It's in the contract.
But that's a responsibility, right?
And that's, how's that enforced? I guess would be my best question. I mean, you know, we gave property Walgreens to use, and they weren't exactly doing a beautiful job maintaining that.
Right, and we bothered them for the last five years, and they finally have begun to take care of it, so let's keep on them. Charlie, I think you were next up.
No, I was just supposed to get to address the DTC.
Thank you.
You know, I don't, I just...
You are?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm good. I don't know what that was about, so...
Yeah, it's okay. It's okay. Thank you.
Gary Clark. Number one, I've been here since the beginning of all the negotiations, and I do think the three of you have done a great job negotiating the contract. Dwayne, your expertise in contracts is well justified in looking at it, because you do have the experience. The no-secret thing, I just, one thing I don't understand is I was at my very first fire commissioner meeting last night, and nothing was mentioned about this money going toward the fire truck.
It's not going towards the fire truck area, it was used as an example. It will go, it will give us enough money if we wanted to do that. There's no, there's no decision, we're getting this money, it doesn't even start paying until the solar panel is built. There's a long road to that.
Again, I just ask you a question.
Yeah.
Let me ask you a question. Is that, that was what was written, is that the money was going to the fire truck?
No, it wasn't. That's not what was written. It was written, it is enough money that could pay for a fire truck. It doesn't say it's going for a fire truck.
It does say that, schedule a project to bring enough money to Deep River over the next 20 years to pay for the fire truck.
To pay for a fire truck. And that's taken out of context. Gary, it's not designated, this money's not designated for anything.
Right, because I just figured it would lessen the tax burden on the town paying for the fire truck.
That's exactly the reason why we're doing this, so we can lessen the burden, the tax burden on the town. That's exactly why we're doing this.
And I think just clarifying it, that it could be used for that, or could be for anything, you know, is maybe despite what it says, you know. This is, this is, this is...
Thank you, Gary.
I agree, Gary. It's 860,000 over 20 years. So in 20 years...
It's enough money to pay for a fire truck.
If that was, if that's what, at the time, is ready for.
I think we're going to have to go back and look at some of the earlier meetings back in August or September, when we started talking about this. And when Titan came in and showed us the two lists of money, and I was adamant to get on the right side with the guaranteed money, and I, 99% sure, I said it would be an excellent for a capital improvement like a fire truck. I said that in one of the meetings.
Yep.
Again, and I, I've been in all the meetings.
Yep.
I do understand what you said, but like I said, I just went to my first meeting last night, nothing was said, and then this gets out, and now this wonder gets off.
But it's a great way, whether we use it for a fire truck, a town truck, or a capital improvement, it's a great way for all of us citizens in here to get $860,000 of not having to tax people over 20 years.
I agree.
So that's what, so that's where I look for, and again, it's no money coming out of our pocket to develop this property to get that money. So it's a win-win.
I look back to my whole life here in town, and I know how many townies, I call myself a townie, I've been here for 60 years. That used to be the town dump. It wasn't the landfill, it was the town dump. Uarco, Monsanto, it's stunk, the seagulls flying over, there was all kinds of stuff in there. There were fires that would burn for hours or days at the time when the fires went. And then whatever point in time, it was elected that it would be capped. So for decades, it was a dump, and now for decades, it's been a capped landfill that's not doing anything for anybody in town. And we have an opportunity now to take that piece of property that has been doing nothing for decades and do something that's green and forward-thinking for the town, and have minimal, if any, expense to the town, as a matter of fact, have income to the town that can, $43,000 could pay for a person and a department that's needed, or it could be saved for 20 years, and when we're long out of office, it could buy a fire truck, or whatever. But I think that it's, I think it's important, and a lot of people know the history of that piece of property, it's been doing nothing for many, many decades, actually, decades.
Again, that's why I started my conversation by, I think, the three of you negotiating a very good contract.
Thanks, Karen.
I didn't start by saying...
No, I understand. Yeah. I appreciate it.
I have one question.
One second, Jerry had a question.
Hi, I'm Jerry Roberts. I used to actually be the director of the Connecticut River Museum. I've lived here for not 60 years, only 16. I'm very supportive of this concept. I think green energy is great. I think the opportunity for the town to make some non-taxpayer dollars is great. My only question is this, and I only found out about this today, that's probably my fault. My question is this, can we make a requirement that some screening trees or bushes be planted along AD? Here's why. AD is one of the last stretches of road that we have around here that have not been urbanized. And, you know, we've seen basically strip malls popping up along many of our roads. I mean, look at Big Wy and West Marine, that used to be a beautiful country corner. And although the town dump is right there, it's a pleasant-looking area with rolling fields. A solar array, as beautiful as the concept is, they are not very attractive, they're very industrial for a setting like that. And I'm just wondering if we could require that some screening trees or hedges be put along AD to mitigate that big wall of glass?
Yeah, we can certainly look into it, we can talk with them about it, and as, as any development goes in, whether it's on town property or not, it does have to go through the proper agencies, land use agencies. So there will be time to have it come up, and it's a good thought. I mean, we can't put two tall over trees on the south side of it, because then it won't click any side, but we can try.
That's not cool.
Thank you.
This sounds like what's been said. Is this money just going to be added to the general fund, or is there some, I mean, people are talking about capital investments, and I'd really like to have some kind of, not just dumped it into the general fund for whatever, but actually tag some of this money for capital investments?
No, this will go into the general fund.
But then it gets used however?
It gets used however, that's correct. It's $43,000 that would not be in the general fund otherwise, unless we tax people for it. So we will make, just like we make decisions on all of our capital projects, we'll go through the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the town. We make these decisions as a town, not on our own. But that money has to go in.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the other opportunities, again, where Dwayne was wanting us to have a specific amount per year, it was a percentage would have been applied to our various electric bills and things like that. So that would have been buried into, into the budget, if you will, and there would be no accountability for it. There were two, you could probably explain it better, or Dwayne can.
Originally, they had two separate, two separate ways to save the money. One was going to give us a tax credit on our electricity bill. You can't track that. I want to see a check come in here, whether it's once a year, whether it's once a month, I prefer once a year. I prefer one check for $43,000 distributed to us once a year, and I, myself, would like to see it in a separate line item, in a box, that we know that that money there was generated for, from the solar. But whether it goes into the general fund or not, it still has to be a tracking, tracking device or somehow that we know that we put in $43,000, $86,000, $112,000. We have to know that that money's in there. That's what my, that's my perfect scenario.
We've got checks, we've got checks in there. Every, you know, when the gas company came in and installed on Main Street, they pay us a certain amount of money every year in taxes. We pay them a certain amount every year in payment, because we had to contribute towards them coming here. That's, that's just an example of everything that, all the dollars that come in are, there's a, there's a, there's a place for them. We have a log for when money comes in, when we get paid by the solar, by the cell towers. We know where that money comes from, and we know where it is. It goes into the general fund, we've got a record of it coming in, just like you do your checkbook, just like you do everything. Whether it goes into a separate line or not is up to the Board of Finance, that's not up to us. That's a Board of Finance decision, and they may or may not decide to do that, I don't know. It sounds like Dwayne will recommend that to them, but we'll see.
It does sound like it would be a good idea to track of where that is going.
We always keep track of it. We know where every penny is, and we get audited every year to confirm that we do that, so...
We have a great Board of Finance that does an excellent job.
Yep. Anything else?
And I guess I would like to see a plan.
Great. Come on downstairs at the end of the meeting, and we'll get more for you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is appointments. We have one appointment, Library Board of Trustees, Catherine Russell, term to expire on 11/18/2025. Catherine has come recommended by a member of the Library Board, and has gotten some good kudos and credits to go, and I think she'd be a great asset to the board.
I'll make a motion for Catherine A. Russell to the Library Board of Trustees, term to
term to expire 11/18/2025.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to review the Vergey lease contract for solar array at Town Garage, possibly moved to a town meeting. We just had quite a conversation about that. Do you guys have anything else you'd like to talk about? Any other concerns that you might have? As you said, we've gone, we've gone through this contract, you've reviewed it, you've had people review it, I've gone through it and, and our town council has gone through it. And Adam Teff from Titan Energy might, might not as headwind. And I tell you, this has been a difficult negotiation. There was, there was a lot of back and forth, which is part of the reason why we're here at this last, at this late hour for this. There was a lot of back and forth to ensure that we, that the town benefits from this as, as much as we can and, and really does not suffer anything from it. So I'm happy with moving it to the town meeting.
I just, I'd just like to have one other thing, clarify some, some information because I got several phone calls today. I just want to put it on record that it was questioned about the process of how this all came about. Well, if everyone recalls, last year, late last year, early summer, we started doing energy efficient with lighting around the town. That's how it all started. And then Angus, we, we belong to three, I don't know what you want to call it, agencies. CCM, which is Connecticut Council of Municipalities, and we belong to COST, Connecticut Conference of State Small Towns. We pay a fee for them every year. It's no different than, I tried to explain to someone today, about the people that served on the Board of Education, like Jim and I did. When you're on the Board of Education, you have CAPE. They're a bigger entity that oversees it. So CCM negotiates these things, they find Titan, people like Titan, and then they come out to the communities and present. Should there have been an RFP, RFQ? Maybe yes, maybe no.
No, I'm going to stop you there. There was an RFP.
Okay.
It just was not from the town, it was through Titan.
But, but that, that eliminates a lot of it because the state has done a lot of this, or CCM has done a lot of this for us. So when Angus was at one of the CCM conferences, that's when he met Adam and Titan, and that's where we are today. So I know there was a lot of mix-up with how the process was done and we didn't do it correctly and Angus or Dwayne or Jim were trying to slide it. We've done this to our best. And I, again, I feel very confident of how this all came about. And people that are in the room here know me, I'm going to say it the way it is, whether it's right or wrong. I feel very confident that we did the right thing. I just want to air that out, that I'm very happy with the process that was taking place and I'm very happy about this coming into town. And I'm very happy we didn't scare Adam away with all of our questions and all of our negotiating back and forth. So I'm just glad that he still wants to stick with the town here.
Well, that, that process was, 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 was very clear. It was a clear process. We, as, exactly as you described, we, we spoke with Adam, spoke with Titan, had a good meeting. Actually, it started off with fuel cells because that's, we had the gas coming through town and that was a great way to generate some energy. That, that didn't pan out and Adam suggested, what do you think about solar panels? And that conversation led to this summer, starting this particular project. Once the project was underway, as I explained earlier, we did go to RFP. All of the things that we talked about earlier happened. We had RFP, we reviewed all of those proposals, we asked Adam questions about each of those proposals, we made our choice, that, that contract was offered, we reviewed the contract and that's why we're here now today, so we can go to town meeting to get this started. So I'm also...
I'm, I'm good.
Okay. So can I have a motion to move it to town meeting?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, we came to this very late.
Okay.
Found out about it.
We were, we actually said earlier that we were not, we, we, the public comment was going to be during the public comment time. There will be another time to comment during the town meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to move it to town meeting.
Okay. We should probably move it to the town meeting with the language that's on the, on the town meeting agenda.
And it has the legal notice?
Yep, the legal notice.
Read the call?
No, just, yeah, the call would be the, no, right here, to authorize it.
Okay, to authorize the First Selectman to execute the solar array lease contract offered by Vergey and to move forward on the solar project. I make the motion.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes out.
Um, all right. That's, that's the agenda. Let's move on to that town meeting.
We need to adjourn it.
So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to take it? No. Thank you, everybody. We're going to go right into the town meeting now. What time you got, Jim?
7:05.
Hmm?
Rick doing?
Yeah, yeah, he's going to get started.
I'm going to look at this one. Breaking anything?
I backed up a little when you were talking.
Rick, I don't know if you...
I'm going to get this to me.
Okay. I'm going to call the town meeting to order at 7:30.
7:06.
7:06. And thank you all for coming out. This is a good, a good showing and I appreciate it. The first item is to ask for nominations for the town meeting moderator.
I make a motion to nominate Rick Daniels as the service moderator.
Thank you.
Second.
Any others? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Good to meet you, yours.
Great to see everybody here. The next item on the agenda would be for the moderator to appoint the town clerk, Amy Winchell, as the clerk of this meeting. And I would ask her to read the call of the meeting.
Okay. Call this meeting, special town meeting Tuesday, March 8, 2022, meeting on Board of Selectmen's meeting, and Richard H. Smith, town clerk, on the floor. I am one to approve actions in the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of March 8, 2022, to authorize the First Selectman to execute the solar array lease contract offered by Vergey and to move forward on the solar project. This notice was dated on the second day of March, 2022.
Okay, with only one item on the agenda, is there a motion to approve that item?
It's not moved.
Which one? Is there a second?
Second.
Adam, can I see? Any discussion? If, if anyone would like to make a comment, you can step up to the microphone, please state your name and your address with clerk.
I'm Bob Sennel from 159 Essex Street. We came to this very late, but has anybody done any background with these guys that have a positive balance sheet to make money with a company? How do we know, you know, they could be there 20 years or, you know, to get a $143,000 under your check?
All right. Yes, we get some bad check. Adam Teff from Titan Energy certainly supported that, backed that check. These guys have been in business for how many years?
Uh, Titan or Vergey?
Vergey.
Vergey. Nine.
Nine. They've, they've installed solar arrays around New England at least, I'm not sure about around the country, but certainly around New England.
Are they profitable? Have you seen a balance sheet?
I have not looked at a balance sheet.
So the way that these are structured is that there's, there's private equity that comes in and even helps fund these and also large institutional lenders like Bank of America, Goldman Sachs, those are the two primary banks that stand behind Vergey. So part of that due diligence embedding, which are different options, was looking at, at how each company's structured, what those cash flows look like, and really setting that standard in the RFP itself, making sure that that was transparent. So that was definitely part of the process.
Any other questions?
Jamie Samuels, 24 Ellen Street. I was not prepared to vote positively on this until I had seen the contract, but I do trust Dwayne's expertise and the fact that he asked so many questions and waited till he got answers. And I have full confidence that in his expertise in, in this area, he's done the town well. And I thank you.
Well, thank you, Jane. But it wasn't just me, it was a team effort. And that's what makes, that's what makes this town role as a team effort, with, with the guidance of, of Adam. But thank you very much.
You need to have contract of, of knowledge.
If it's, if it succeeds, I'll take the credit. If it fails, I'm going to run. No. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Comments? Comments, questions? Comment?
Yeah, I would just, I would just like to put the record. I'm Jerry Roberts, 35 Merewell Lane, and I think it's a great idea. I would just like there to be a requirement that we do some kind of mitigation along Route 80 so that we're not all looking at walls of glass on this pretty pleasant country road.
Dan Morrissey, 58 Essex Street. This is really just a clarification. And I, I think this has been done, but I want, I want to hear confirmed. Did we solicit multiple bids?